Where we ended yesterday, we're going to start with Tab 9, which is Public Works. Obviously, Public Works has a lot of divisions, and so you see a lot of tabs under Public Works. You also have within those divisions in the General Fund and in Enterprise Fund. And so we're going to start with sanitation, one of the biggest departments in the city of McAllen with a hefty $21 million budget and about 182 employees. So she's going to highlight that because otherwise we'd be here all afternoon. And then if you have questions about it, I'm sure she can take care of it.
Like you did yesterday, I think we were kind of getting more that stuff that was different where the edges are.
Right, exactly what we're going to do. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Take that away.
Mayor, Mr. St. George, thank you very much for the opportunity. My wife and me, you for the time, but I'd like to thank our city manager. He was gracious enough to allow us the... I am grateful, sir. Extremely grateful. But sanitation fund, as he was saying, is a $25 million fund. It's an enterprise fund. It has a strong balance of $17 million. We requested this fiscal year an additional five employees, which we were granted, making it a total of 282 employees within our Public Works Fund. We did request $1.9 million in capital outlay. And with that, $750,000 are geared for a shortage in our depreciation fund. We are purchasing 34 units and therefore the impact to the capital project. I'm grateful. Everybody else has been approved on the sanitation side?
Oh, no. I'm fine here. Very good. The air conditioner went down finally. Okay, did you say you're added? You requested $500,000 more in the depreciation fund?
No.
To cover?
No, sir. We are... We asked for $750,000. It's impacting our capital outlay fund line item because we were short on a depreciation fund. So in order for us to fund the entire purchase and replacements for any unit that we're going to purchase, we have to fund it through the capital outlay when we're short on the depreciation fund.
Does that mean we don't have any... We don't have a balance in the depreciation fund?
Yes, we do. We have a strong depreciation fund with an $8 million depreciation fund. But we try to fund every individual piece of equipment with... If we don't have enough into the depreciation fund, then we fund it through operating fund. So that's what we're doing.
So the depreciation fund is earmarked for if... This is for equipment? If this is for, let's just say, vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, and if there's not enough money in the depreciation fund for vehicles and you're purchasing more or it's costing you more vehicles that you're purchasing, okay, than you have in the depreciation fund, that means that you're asking for the O and M to cover that. Is that correct?
Yes.
And in here is the detail of what you're...
Yes.
My first go around, so I got to ask.
That's fine.
Questions are good. Anything we disagree on?
Yes, sir.
All right, may I ask a question?
Well, you know, we have a huge luxury in sanitation. Huge, huge luxury. One is that she's got an amazing working capital. You know, we're estimating $17 million. Another, almost $9 million in depreciation. And so, you know, it's a very well-run department, very well-managed. And so one of the things that you see, the last thing I'm going to say, in the General Fund that you usually don't see here is sometimes I recommend that you use fund balance of depreciation to take care of shortage. We never do that here because their fund balances are so well... are so good. So it's in really good shape.
So then, explain to me the $750,000. What is it coming from?
You actually... You said it right. You said it right. So when we buy a new truck, right? We buy a new truck and we depreciated the old truck. And we were able to put into the depreciation fund $20,000, right, through the seven years of life. But the new truck is $30,000. You either fund the difference through capital, which is what we prefer to do, which is what sanitation does all the time, or you... My word is you eat it out of depreciation if that fund is healthy. So sometimes we do that in the General Fund. We never do it here because it doesn't impact taxes and because her funds are so high.
And is there revenues coming in?
There's plenty of working capital.
And eating it out of depreciation, it's going to catch up with you some...
Right. And so what we did several years ago is we changed the depreciation policy completely. Life of vehicles, amount we fund, all of those things. And so what we're seeing is that the fund balance in the General Fund is very healthy and allows you to do that from time to time as long as you keep monitoring that fund balance. Okay?
In the General Fund, we also... Public Works also receives some of the General Fund departments, which is streets and drainage. And also, again, we run our departments very lean, very brutal with our funding and our requests. And therefore, we were able to justify those requests to the city manager. And so very little change, if at all any. So very little to discuss in terms of the mayor wanting to discuss those things that were not funded. If I may just take a minute of your time just to give you a real quick overview of what we've done in our departments. If I may start with recycling. Our recycling program has increased considerably. We have generated $618,000 with our general... We've generated that revenue through the removal of the black bin. The citizens of McAllen are participating with our program. Our recycling has... Our feedstock, in terms of the contamination rate, has decreased by 27%. And our recycling tonnage has increased 36%. Our commodity pricing, surprisingly enough, has gone... It has increased 55% over last year. Even with this COVID and the dip in pricing has been great for us here. We have the pleasure and the blessing of doing business with Mexico. And so their pricing has consistently remained and in some occasions has increased, which is allowing us to stay... To meet our revenue and exceed our revenue in this particular year. The other thing I want to bring out to your attention is that freeze that we had in February, it impacted our brush department. We collected 140,000 cubic yards within a three-month period. That's a 206% increase from same time last year. McAllen, in comparison to other cities and the state, we... It took us three months to entirely collect the brush throughout the city, but versus four to five and six months in some other cities. So I think the team did really well. In our drainage maintenance program, the quadrant schedule that I presented to you all last year is working well. Our system worked. Typically, we have to dispatch, deploy, seven pumps to different... Seven locations throughout the city. In this particular occasion, the system did what it was supposed to do. The projects engineering has spearheaded and completed along with the county, has helped our system. We did have... From seven locations, we went down to two. But we also learned that in the new annexed areas, there were three areas that were annexed that we had to actually de-water. We're calling them the 3Ms: Magnum, Mayberry, and Seven Mile Line. So we collectively de-watered 4,662,510 gallons of that area. So it's like... It's like four times a water tower. Just to get put it in perspective. And just please know that Public Works is prepared for hurricane season. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
You might want to touch... Because this is being viewed. What we're planning to do with the compost?
Yes, sir. Static is static that we are able... We're currently working on purchasing a property to relocate our composting facility from work... From its current location.
Are we still using the sludge from the wastewater treatment plant?
Unfortunately, we are not. We are... We're just doing organic, organic matter. It's 100% organic. We're using our brush with vegetable waste, green waste, and that's how we generate our compost products.
Some of the problems we received after the storm, of course, you know that the water wasn't being collected fast enough. Do you think we have enough trucks? Or do you think we needed to acquire anymore? What are your takes on it?
We will eventually. In fact, we're doing a study right now. As the city starts growing north and continues to annex, we will definitely come before you and ask you for not only trucks, but personnel as well.
So when we have an event like that, you know, we really don't have the capacity to pick up any faster and it's just going to be kind of a wait-and-see until we can get to the whole city, right?
Yes. We... What we did this time around, as opposed to when we were in hurricane season when we created that... The three sections of the city, we continued in our schedule. We stayed on schedule collecting the four quadrants as we typically collect them. What we did is we injected some more personnel from other departments within Public Works. So we used some of the streets and drainage and some of their dump trucks to help brush with that collection so that we could stay within the quadrant schedule. We collected that area. Unfortunately, people put as much as they could. What we did learn was many residents were hoping that their trees and their shrubs would come back to life and they didn't. And so we continued seeing that that...
And the volume? The volume of the brush self-commission is too much so the trucks have certain capacities and they fill a lot faster and then the travel time to dispose and come back. That's your time.
Does your department have a plan off the same day that you had asked? Where we know that a tropical storm is heading our way, sometimes we have a three or four-day window ahead of time to coordinate or establish with close proximity. Do we actually take a proactive approach or maybe we do more trips to be sure that the brushes are... Or the streets are clear of brush? Because you know brush leaves during a tropical storm. It's going to go into our foam water drainage and clog it up. Do we have something like that already in place?
Yes. So what we do is we don't necessarily pick in the residents. We focus on our drainage system. So we ensure that the brush and any illegal dumping throughout our drainage system is clear. That's our focus right before the storm. And of course, making sure we have, you know, sandbags and our equipment is operational. As we top off, we make sure that our pumps are working, our generators are working, and that's what we focus on.
Would it be viable to look at that? Do you feel that's something that maybe within our budget, within the department's budget, that something that could be done? I mean, give or take. You know, we have two, three, and four hurricane or tropical storm events on average in any given year. Is that something that maybe to look forward?
Absolutely.
Because what I see, at least in my district, and maybe in the other districts, is sometimes people obviously don't follow the brush schedule. So you have brush landing another three or four weeks later and it's still there. And of course, that contributes to the blockage and the windows for water to flow. I've seen it where people put their brush or debris in black garbage bags, which they're not supposed to do. And then they float in the water and then, you know, plots of debris. And I think that your department has done a very good job of education in putting it out there through the website or CNN, sometimes even in the flyers, you know, about not putting stuff down to drain. But I think those are continuing efforts. And you said my district is recognizing a couple neighborhoods where it's just a matter of education, where people understand what is being required of them to do so that they're not getting... They call the sex toilet with water.
We will start all the time.
Thank you.
Senator Ambida, I had a couple... Actually, I was talking to a couple of the residents and just think in that in our area, especially like in La Balboa, like the trash collector, they go through the alleys, correct? They go through the alleys, right, to collect? Because they put their trash cans in the back and that's where they go. Do you don't think... And actually, this was a suggestion that came up like, is there any way that we can change them from moving them from the alley to the front?
Absolutely. You are talking our language. We prefer that. We prefer to collect them on the curb. The entire system is designed to work off a curb. So in some areas in La Balboa, we moved them from the back to the front. The brush collection is still in the alley, but we have both collections throughout the district area.
And the thing is, is because most of the deterioration from the alleys comes from like, obviously, the very trucks. So would it be... Would it be efficient for us to move pretty much everybody to the front and just not have our trucks go through the alleys? I think you like the idea.
Yes, as a matter of fact, we're conducting a study. I've asked staff to conduct a study to see what it would take to do that. Some residents don't want to. So if you... If I can count on your support to do that, we will certainly move forward. It'll be a lot more efficient to have it on the curb. Many residents leave their bins in the alley. And regardless of whether they're full or not, the truck has to stop and service it regardless. And so when they put them in the front, obviously, we will service it only when it's out.
And we can get back to the budget. Otherwise, I'm going to start talking about potholes. So let's talk about the numbers. Where are we doing? Okay, anything else? Guys, anything else?
Well, before very rudely cut off, Mayor, that's not... That's very rude.
No, it's because we need to get into the budget.
Well, no, but this is something... This is something that's going to help... That's going to help them also facilitate the work. So 100% my support to do that. Actually, I spoke to a couple of the residents with the mayor. We were there, what, last week? And I did post that and I told him, "You guys need to help us in getting everything to a week." So let's start doing it.
Let... Yeah. Let us bring that back and this type of atmosphere because we do have to study it. It's going to take a huge effort on our citizens' part. The South McAllen has a couple of things that are different. The lots are very, very small, which means that bins are very, very close to each other. And I'm not picking on them, but a lot of folks park in the street because they have to. And that's a big problem for us. So we'll bring it back and we'll bring all that information. Okay? We're going to jump the golf course because you're here, brother, and go to the convention center. So I got a lot of kudos today. Kudo kudos. So we talked about Public Works, you know, the convention center and performing arts. The year that we went through where... You've heard it before. Venues were the first ones to close, the last ones to open. So we had our hands full when we put this budget together last year. And, you know, with a combination of lucky, blessed, and good, we did very, very well. And so I really want to applaud those departments for the budget that they have and what we're able to do.
Thank you, Mr. Abidal. Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioner, for allowing me to present today. The first budget that I'd like to discuss, there are three budgets that we'll be discussing today, is the McAllen Convention Center, then the McAllen Performing Arts Center, and finally, Quin de Masuplan. So the McAllen Convention Center had a very interesting year. We fought hard on a convention center and on a city level to protect public health. And we started off the year with an alternate care facility. And we then switched over to a mass vaccination site before we were able to open our facilities for mass public events. So half of the year, we were an alternate care facility. And then we went over to mass vaccination sites. At some point, we conducted both at the same time. One of the interesting things about the year is that it forced us to think outside of the box. We were able to present events in a creative way. We were able to present hybrid events, events that were virtual, events that were social distance, events that were outdoors, drive-through events that were safe and social distance to the public, and a lot of outdoor activities that kept people also safe. The numbers for Convention Center look very healthy. We usually bring in... There are a lot of line items, but we usually bring in $900,000 in rentals. We're able to bring in $2.1 million in rentals this year. It's something that we won't be able to sustain, but we're happy that we were able to serve the public in this way. So I'd like to jump into the decision packet. A few of the things that we're working on at Convention Center is beautifying the property, making sure that we have the proper maintenance. One of the things that we have been lacking is groundskeepers. We don't have any full-time groundskeepers. So in between events, our staff go out and make clean events. But we really need to maintain our landscape, our beds, having somebody go out there daily to be able to maintain that curb appeal because it is one of the most important venues in the entire region. So we are asking for two full-time groundskeeper positions. The other thing that we realized throughout the last few years, but really post-pandemic, is that it's really important for us to have our own staff. Sometimes when we use temporary staffing agencies, we get a lot of turnover or we get a lot of people that just don't show up. And so when we are putting together events, it's crucial for us to have staff that understand the way the city operates, understand the way the Convention Center and our events operate. And with that, we are requesting to fill our seasonal staff, our major events with seasonal staff. And we are requesting 15 seasonal positions. These would start in November. That would lead up to our big holiday parade that would lead up to our 30 or 40 days of Christmas and then have this staff be able to work that particular timeframe. The next thing that I wanted to mention is that we are now focused a lot on being able to contribute directly to quality of life and quality of life programming. Last year, this fiscal year, we were able to produce two new events. One was an illuminated drive. The other was dinos and dragons. I'm happy to report that for every dollar that we spent on dinos and dragons, we were able to recuperate $2 in revenue. And so we would like to continue the model where we keep a 40-day holiday event and then have the opportunity to bring in another 30-day long-range event for the community. It could be dinos and dragons. It could be Ice Age. It could be the next best thing. But make sure that the city is always on top of the trends and bringing these amazing programs that haven't been available to the region. So we are requesting $800,000 in special events. We are also estimating that we'll be able to bring in revenue that will able... That will cover all of the expenditures. So for us, this is going to be a positive, something that will put us in the black, not just a request on expenses. Security has been something that... This line item continues to go up with the increase of events, with the increase of price per hour on security. We are requesting a $50,000 increase on security for our events. Hourly rates have gotten up since the past... In the past few years. And we have been able to save on electricity through cost-saving measures, switching to LED lights, making sure that we have key performance indicators to be able to lower the electric bill. And we have saved $100,000. So we're reducing our budget by $100,000 for electricity.
We need channers.
Who did they... You guys do?
Me?
We've been able to do this ourselves so far, but we are also looking at what else could we do to be able to save on electricity.
DIY, I like that.
And the facility is approaching our 15-year mark, which means that there are things that are starting to break down. And we've noticed that parts of the facility are starting to break down because we're getting to that 15-year mark. So we are also requesting an increase in our maintenance budget so that we can have...
Is the budget that the city manager is recommending supplies for the food or leaves?
Yes, sir.
Can you identify those items where you are making the request and it's not being recommended by the city manager?
I'm happy to say that with the Convention Center side, on all of these requests, the city manager has approved his request. There are some non-capital outlay items that really can wait until the next year to be able to purchase. So we're very happy with the city manager's recommendation.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a quick question. I brought up the idea of the Park Ranger in the past that would drive to the major parks, let's say Oval Park, you know, and maybe others. Have we given that any consideration or any thought?
It's not in our current budget, but we're starting to see more of a need for it with the addition of restrooms and different things that we're adding at the facility. This last year, the facility, as you know, the grounds were closed for most of the year for these special events that we had and just because we were trying to keep the grounds as sanitized as possible. I think that that's something that we can discuss with our Parks and Recreation Team. We also, in the next few years, are looking at the War Memorial. That's something that is not... Is not something that we would like to take over this year, but the War Memorial is definitely on our grounds. It is part of what we do in terms of promotion and marketing for the venue.
Yeah, because there's a lot of cars that pass through Oval Park, you know?
We do have full-time security at the facility and we do have overnight security. The overnight security looks... They're looking at our cameras the entire time for the entire campus. That includes the Oval Park, the two buildings, and the War Memorial. So we do have that. They're not outside driving around as a park ranger would, but we do have full-time security at the facilities.
When we have the outdoor events that have been extremely successful and very entertaining, we see the tremendous amount of compliments. But at times, you know, the traffic and the way... But at times, you know, the traffic and the way, the way the parking area, the bathroom facilities are so, is there, and because we have the Performing Arts here there that's being used, and hopefully will be used more this year, is the layout of these events being looked at to see if possibly we could make it a little more conforming?
We learned so much this last year, specifically with our first outdoor event, which was the drive-through holiday event. We had a backup, you know, a thousand cars trying to get in all at the same time. And so we were, we changed the route, we were very efficient. And by the time we had to do another drive-through, which was vaccinations, we had it down just like a, it was, it was just beautiful the way people would go in and go out. And so we were able to identify what those issues were, and we were able to fix it within a few days. Now, for the next upcoming events, we're looking at a walk-through model if safety and security would allow, but we're also using a contingency of drive-through. So if we cannot do walk-through outdoor events, we are planning a drive-through. And if we cannot do walk-through events, we probably won't be able to use a pack anyway. So we're looking at both scenarios that would not take into consideration the parking lot at the Performing Arts Center.
Actually, just for like, one of the biggest things that we hear is kind of like that is, the events that we have at the Convention Center, they're phenomenal, they're amazing, 100%. So you want to drop that on the podcast?
Thank you.
However, some of the constituents there, like, it's a little too expensive. Like, once you get into, like, if you're a family of four or five, then you're looking at over $100, $150 to take the whole family. And we're talking like $20 per person, kind of like that price range. Is there any way that we can start doing like family packages? So it's kind of like if you're a family of over four, it's like a set price and that way you...
We have events in all shapes and sizes. We do have free events, we have events that you have to have a paid admission for. Most of the events, in a non-pandemic year, we have 500 events at the facility. Most of the events are produced by an outside promoter, and they rent the facility, and the facility serves as a rental, and we go based off of their guidelines. So they tell us what the ticket prices are. We're always trying to make sure they understand that this is a different market. It's not New York, it's not Dallas, it's not a market that has a higher spending range. We want to make sure that the events are accessible for the entire family. So we do have a say-so in terms of, you know, being at the table and being able to advocate for that. And we do have free events as well, and sometimes it's possible and sometimes it's not possible. Like, for example, Tuba Christmas is a free event for the entire family, and we have Sunset Live, which is a free event for the entire family as well. So it just depends on the type of event, and it also depends on the investment because everybody's looking to at least break even on these events. And we are as well when we produce events, we want to be able to break even. Any other questions on Convention Center?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to now present the, thank you, the McAllen Performing Arts Center. The McAllen Performing Arts Center had a difficult year because we were closed for the majority of the year. We thought we would be able to open in October, and all of the bookings that we've had have now shifted to the fall of 2021, which is going to come into our next fiscal year. The next fiscal year is looking good. When we first went on sale, we had a 35% increase in all of our ticket sales. Right now, we're monitoring what that looks like within the last week with the new Delta variant, if we're going to have to cancel events or not. But we have a record number of on-sales at the cap. Starting September, we have over 30 events on sale this year. That doesn't count our Broadway subscription, our season subscriptions, our Valley Symphony Orchestra, the events that have seasons, that's only in single tickets, and we have a lot of events moving forward. So if things stay steady and we're able to keep the pack at 100%, the Performing Arts Center will have a really, really good year. One of the other things that's not reflected in the budget for Performing Arts Center is we did receive a, we got a notice last week that we received a $614,000 grant for shuttered venues. And so we're really excited about that because it really offset some of the losses for Performing Arts Center. And...
Yeah, hide on the, the items that were not covered on the furniture for the, this is for the lobby area, right?
Yes.
What kind of furniture are you looking at?
So the...
Because it does need it.
The Performing Arts Center currently doesn't have any furniture in the facilities. It does need it. This wasn't a good year for the Performing Arts Center. And these are things that we requested this year, but we also understand that revenues were not good for the pack. And we can wait until the next fiscal year to be able to purchase all of the items that were not purchased.
Okay.
Real quick question.
Yes.
I saw there on the capital outlay, less than 5,000 regarding the shuttle, the request is two. Was that not also requested last year or maybe this year prior to that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
With regards to the shuttle under the capital outlay request?
The, the off part, yes.
Yeah. Wasn't that request made two years ago?
We did have that request, and it was actually approved the last fiscal year. But when the pandemic hit, we, we were, I would like to say approval is a bad word, but we tried to save every penny, and we did not spend anything making sure that we were able to hit our numbers. And I think that it showed over the last three years, our budget has been very healthy. And so we just decided to hold back on it.
About it. Thank you.
It was approved, but we made that decision to not purchase it, yes.
Approval is not a bad word.
Any questions on Performing Arts Center? So the last budget is Quinta Matatlan. Quinta has done a tremendous job in also reinventing and recreating what they do with the nature trails. They've had themed trails through last summer, and they've run all the way through this summer, which is fantastic because we've been able to see a 45% increase in attendance. We've had over 70,000 people visit Quinta Matatlan within this budget year. With the pandemic, it's incredible. We've been able to have a lot of visitors in the area that are really looking forward to doing outdoor things that are safe. And so we've been able to capitalize on that. We've also seen an increase in revenues. We went from $230,000 last year to $334,000 estimated increase in 2021. One of the things with Quinta that we're looking forward to doing is we're going to open a Center for Urban Ecology in 2023. And so that's one of the things that we're planning towards. We're working right now with our architects, with engineers, to be able to plan for this huge master plan. With that, we've had some seasonal positions that we want to convert into one full-time position. And in order to not offset the budget, we're looking to reclass three seasonal positions for one full-time position. In addition to that, our website was also pretty outdated, and we're asking for $14,000 so that we can revamp our website, which is pretty much the cost in getting a good website up and running. Any questions on Quinta Matatlan?
I see some pretty small items that weren't recommended. Any reason, Roy, maybe $400 for pool chemicals, something like that? It sounds like that's something you think is necessary.
Yeah, it's just bottom line, you know, it's just bottom line for every department. You know, I give very little, I recommend very little.
Trying to get it clean this year.
We're going to have a lecture play. I would suggest you all give it to her.
There you go.
Let's give her the $400.
Overwritten again.
And then there's also maintenance of the golf carts. Like, are you going to let them run down? $500?
They run really good right now.
You guys, at the very end, if there's something that's not recommended by our city manager and you all already feel you all need it, well, let us know. I mean, we can consider it or not, or, you know, for ways.
There's a request I saw here, less than 5,000 on non-capital-outlay that's to replace plants and trees that were killed off by the winter storm. Given how important aesthetic is to that facility, do you think that that's really important enough to be kept up?
I think so.
Because the facility is a nature center, it's important for us to have the outdoor landscaping tip-top shape. I think that we can work around it, but I mean, it is an important line item for the facility.
Want to set up 1000?
That's, yeah, 72...
Yeah, 72. And I think a lot of that is on the sort of driveway or slash walk-up, right? All that stuff on the left guy.
Right, it was a bongabelia lane.
There's all the bongabelias there. They look gorgeous.
Oh, they're beautiful.
Yes.
I think that's very, very important.
I agree with JJ.
I'm with you guys too on the pool 72.
We'll grab them from those lines.
One question, you're checking for...
Bring the trees back, the bongabelias back.
For each picture, write about that, right?
Yeah, I'd love, yes.
So you're asking for $8,000, more or less. Will we be able to rent this equipment?
We provide it.
You provide it?
You provide it. So it's not a, it's not a revenue source for the...
It's not a revenue source?
No, but we provide it with our revenues.
And the condition of the equipment right now?
This is to increase the chairs for our rentals. So we feel that as our rentals are increasing, we do need to have more chairs available for our weddings and for our special events. They're the white patio chairs that you see at weddings.
Quinta is very popular, you rented a lot?
Quinta Matatlan is a very, very popular wedding destination, yes.
Look at the outdoor...
If we can consider...
Why don't we meet the department and the city manager in the middle and do like 50, 50 chairs, five tables?
Yeah, we'll do 4,000.
Then do that?
Do like half.
Then do that, and then we implement it the next year?
Yeah, because Quinta is really...
I mean, if there's something that people rent, then it's a revenue for us, I mean, right?
6250?
What? We'll go half.
Half, four.
We'll go half and they can decide.
So it's four, zero, four, three. I try to do the half. 4,000.
Excellent.
Any questions on Quinta Matatlan?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We can go to the golf course?
And I'll start it with the $400.
Kudos to Carlos now. Carlos is seeing the...
Yeah, you should probably go back to the restroom. We're going to put like your diarrhea...
Carlos is seeing rounds here at this golf course. And it is in no small part because of how he keeps the golf course.
Oh, golf course.
The recommendation that he makes to us that we consider in expenses. And I mean, the golf course just looks amazing. So that says a lot about you.
Thank you, Roy. Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners, for the opportunity to present today. As our city manager was saying, we've been very, very fortunate here, but never like we have seen fortune this year. There is absolutely no doubt that the pandemic has had a positive impact on the number of rounds here at the golf course. It's not reflected in the numbers that are in front of you, the number of rounds that we normally do. But we are expecting to be, at the end of the year, between 51,000 and 52,000 rounds, as opposed to our average of about 43,750 rounds that we used to have. So I don't want to sound like 43,750 was an easy number to get to. I think that all we got to do is look around other golf courses, and we're very, very fortunate to be able to even do the average rounds that we have had for the past few years here at Palm Dew. So all in all, if you look at the, at the working capital summary, the fund balance summary, we had estimated at the time that the budget documents were prepared to finish the year, $202,860 ahead of expenses. Well, that number is probably now closer to $305,000 with still two months left in the year. So overall, a really, really good year. Obviously, everyone's question, at least in our industry, is how long is it going to last? Are we going to be able to sustain it, so on and so forth? So having said that, I want to first say that we concur with all of the city manager's recommendations on the packet. We're in agreement with every one of them. The way we put together our revenue budget for the upcoming fiscal year, if you look there, we went ahead and grabbed the best year that Palm Dew had ever had before the pandemic, and then added about $20,000. And that's how we came up with the $1,629,748 in revenues for fiscal year '21-'22. It is not an aggressive number, but it's not a conservative number by any means. It is the best year we've ever had prior to pandemic. So why don't we use the pandemic here? Well, it's only been 10 months, and there is still a lot of unknowns out there. I certainly feel that, and so do most of the people in the industry, that all of the challenges that surround the game of golf haven't gone away. It's just that there was a point in the pandemic where golf was the only game in town, and there was just a bunch of people that were playing. So it brought out some new golfers, and it brought some golfers that had stopped playing and started playing again. And so, you know, the, they're going to probably continue to do that, but the challenges will eventually get back at the game itself, meaning, you know, it takes four and a half hours to play a round of golf. Equipment is expensive, overall, it's an expensive game, and so on and so... It's a very difficult game to learn also. And so all of those things haven't gone away. And so that's why we were somewhat, you want to call it a conservative, and chose not to go with the numbers that we're seeing today for next year. So all in all, the revenue budget, again, is a record year, was about $20,000. In terms of the expenses, if you look at, we concur with the city manager also. The increase that you see there is mainly compensation study-related, pay rate adjustments. We are converting four positions that used to be part-time into full-time. We're also, our credit card processing fees increased quite a bit, about $8,000, $7,000 for next year. And so those combined to increase our operating costs by about $100,000. But again, it's all for the good of the golf course. What we have found is that it's been very difficult. We typically operate with half of the staff being part-time. And it's been very difficult to keep part-time help around for the reasons that everyone's aware of. So we're having a hard time keeping up just with the essential mowing and fertilizing and things that we got to do. And so we hope that by being able to offer full-time status to some people, we'll be able to attract more candidates.
You mentioned the credit card processing fee. Is the city eating that fee? Are we paying for that fee?
Yes, we pay about, well, this year is going to be close to $30,000 a year.
Why can't we carry that on to the paper?
We never have, and we've discussed that we never have.
You can, I mean, you're going to find that for smaller operations like the golf course, you're going to get pushed back, especially from golfers.
Oh, yeah.
And so that's just, that's part of his rates.
Yeah, it's already expensive.
We consider it part of the cost of doing business, you know?
Yeah, I guess I had the same question as JJ. That's why I was wondering why it would have been in the decision package, right? Because usually that would just be an expense that's relative to revenue. So a $7,000 increase in credit card, to me, would amount to about a $225,000 increase in revenue through credit card processing. So the credit card fees kind of sort of cover themselves, right? Because if revenue would remain the same, you wouldn't have those fees. That's where my question comes in. But to JJ's point two, what's the green fee?
Right now, it's $28.
Yeah, so 28 times...
Green fee at heart are $41, including the tax.
Yeah, 41.
1.3%.
So if you pass it on to the client, you're looking at about a buck 23, would that really, you know... Because what a lot of places do, and I'm not sure if even Zamora's does this...
We care on Patreon.
Yeah, they care on Patreon, they do, they do what's called a cash discount. And it's not really a cash discount. The cash pays full price, but the credit card has the fee attached. And so technically, if you pay with cash, you get, you're paying less, right? But it's not a discount, it's full, full menu price or full, full price. But I wouldn't see, you know, adding a buck 50 for credit card processing or rolling it in, right, making it 4250 if you pay by credit card.
But you're still, you're still making money, right?
What's the revenue from the golf?
If you remove the $555,000 in golf cart expense, that's, isn't that a capital outlay, I guess?
If we want, I'm sorry?
Well, the golf cart expense of $555,000?
Yeah, that, that one, I believe...
That's for the purchase, no?
It's more of a purchase, yes.
It's more of a capital outlay?
Yes.
So if, if that wasn't there, or that was more of a normal year, we're still going to be making money at this department anyways, so...
Yes, well, if you look at the bottom line, and I was heading in that direction, if you look at revenues over expenses for fiscal year '21-'22, it shows a $363,000 deficit. hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar deficit. Two hundred and fifty-five thousand of that reflects the purchase of the golf carts for which a budget amendment was approved a couple of weeks ago. And then, forty thousand are actually, if you look at just above that figure, in the section above that, the two hundred thousand dollar figure, that's what we normally transfer from our revenues to the depreciation fund. Well, since it's covered over here down below through the budget amendment, we no longer need that forty thousand. So the reality is that, that three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar deficit is more like sixty-eight thousand in a normal year. And so, we have discussed it with the advisory board, we have discussed it with management, and we recommend that we have a two dollar increase for this year to cover these increases in costs that we've had to our green fee and about, and about a hundred dollar increase to the membership. It will help us prepare better for the future. And let me just say that we have not had an increase at Palm Beach Golf Course for the green fee or the membership since two thousand and six.
Yeah, it's time.
Yeah, and so, I feel like whether we go, I think if we go with a two dollar increase
We go to forty-three?
Pardon me?
Forty-three dollars?
Forty-three dollars. Forty-three dollars, that would include tax, ninety cent, ninety-nine cents or so are taxed. So, the actual fee would be twenty-eight plus twelve oh one, and we're proposing that we increase that twenty-eight dollar to thirty.
So did the advisory board, were they in agreement?
Yes, sir. It was approved by every member.
How did we compare with, I guess, the country club or other?
Well, the country club is different. They pay probably, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it's probably been close to four, four hundred and twenty dollars a month in dues. I'm not familiar or a hundred percent.
Yeah, it's under five hundred for full member or social is like two twenty-five, which gives you
Is it off to five?
Two fifty, which gives you two rounds a month. But if you, if you take a guest, the guest is what, fifty-two dollars?
No, but social, social, you still have to pay the green fees. It's about sixty bucks.
Yeah, it's just under sixty dollars.
How about other municipal golf courses?
Yes, I actually have a handout, but we are the highest-priced municipal golf course in the valley, but I don't want to sound egotistical, but also by far the best. And the golf course in Edinburgh, Los Lagos is the same price. So, Harlingen, eighteen-hundred green fee, seventeen dollars. Sherry Golf Course is twenty-one. Tierra del Sol in Far is twenty-six, and then McAllen and Edinburgh are at twenty-eight. West Lakota is at thirty-one, but it is not a city-owned golf course. It is public, but it's not city-owned. So by going to thirty on the green fee and one thousand three hundred dollars on the annual membership, we would still be ahead of everyone on the annual membership, just so that everyone's aware of it. Harlingen is at seven hundred and fifty dollars, Mission is at nine twenty-five, Far is at eleven hundred, and Edinburgh is at eleven hundred. So they put themselves just below us, but, you know, it hasn't really had an impact on us.
I think Commissioners, I want to withdraw his question.
I withdraw my question.
No, but at the very end, we also can't just compare ourselves with the other municipalities and base our decisions on that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the number of rounds tells you that the, that the price is a non-issue card.
And comparing price, just price without also comparing the quality of the course, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't even compare ourselves.
Yeah, and honestly, I think we have very loyal golfers here that they're not going to go nowhere.
Now, we've been very fortunate here for many, many years, without a doubt, without a doubt.
Now, I have a question on the, when we're talking about the pro shop, so we have expenses of four hundred and nine?
Mm-hmm.
Like, and what's the revenue from the pro shop?
The revenues are reflected in green fees and carts and driving range balls. The pro shop is the central control and command station basically for the, for the The merchandise is not part of the city. The merchandise is not part of the city.
One of the things, believe it or not, I used to play golf twice a week, okay? For many, many, many years. And it can only, the golf course could only take so many rounds per year. And we're at that limit, aren't we, or above, right? The fifty-one, fifty-two thousand rounds? Because you would, you, the course, the wear and care of the course is, is sometimes too much. Where are we in truth, in truthfully, no, in the wear and care of our course? Truthfully, where are we and what is the condition of our course right now?
The golf course is in good shape. The rains, of course, right now that we have had are tremendous. But I feel very comfortable, Commissioner Hiere, that we can continue to present good quality as long as we continue between fifty and fifty-five thousand rounds. There is other challenges that come along with that height of a number of rounds that are not related to quality. People want to play fast, they're not used to this many people, and so there is other challenges. But as far as the condition of the golf course, we're okay up until fifty-five thousand rounds. I would guess we've never had fifty-five thousand rounds, but the weather here is conducive to good growth. We have plenty of water and, you know, you can almost grow grass here rounds.
How, what's the interval of the, of the rounds, of the starts right now? How many minutes?
Seven and a half. So we go seven, eight, seven, eight, seven, eight. It works really well for the most part. Sometimes we do get in trouble because we are getting a lot of new golfers and they're not as efficient as getting on the tee, at getting on the tee and off the tee as normal. So, but we never fall behind more than about fifteen minutes because of that. Typically, part of the reason we have that, those intervals is because you have no show so also.
We know your business.
And then on the, on the, on the restaurant, do we, do we, do we also run the restaurant or does it get leased out?
It's leased out now.
It is that part of the land, these agreements?
It's part of the, that revenue is on the rental, on the rental.
And how much, how much do we rent it for?
It's seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per month.
Is it, because actually, well, kind of what was, kind of like right now, it's like we have like University Drafthouse and it's, can we do something in there where it's more like we rent it out to kind of like, to like something type of like, like taco, well, not taco, for like that type of restaurant where it's more like, it's more like a hangout, not just like a, let's just buy a sandwich or nothing like that, but it's more of a, more of an interactive, because I was, I was actually thinking like maybe we can try to, try to revitalize that area and make it more, like more like a hip area? Because I know like a lot of the, a lot of people like they like playing golf and everything, but they also hang out. And I think if we have like, maybe like better options when it comes to like the, like the choice of like food and so, and we could potentially lease it out and get, get more money out of, out of if we lease it to, because I think seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for leasing that area is very low. It's a very low leasing amount.
Well, that's what we lease it to, Carlos.
Yes.
I mean, that, that's not, that's not a universal rental.
Okay.
So.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know, I didn't know Carlos was still not listed.
Yeah, so the, the way we've always worked the golf courses, I mean, Carlos is our golf pro. He's not a golf pro anymore, right? But he's our golf pro. So, he's, he's our guy, right? And so, his expertise is, is something that we really don't compensate it for in the salary. And so, he is responsible for the pro shop. That, that was your question earlier, is all of the, all of the clothing and others that we sell here is actually his business. Same thing with the cafeteria. And so, if that, that's basic, that's a different model that we can certainly look at if the city commission wants to do, but that's a different model than we have in, in business right now. And so, he gets, he gets a salary that if he was being paid as a golf pro, would be double or triple. And so that's how we help compensate him.
But, and my, my thing is like, if we provide, and, and I get
I was just kidding about double or triple.
No, but like, let's say if we're able, if we're able to lease it out at a higher rate and, I mean, the pro shop, that's fine, like that, for me, it's more like the restaurant. Because if we do that potentially from there, we can increase his salary where, and we're able to have like, maybe like, like, kind of like a, like a University Drafthouse, honestly, like, like a University Drafthouse type of restaurant here where it's more like a hangout spot dating else. And actually, when
I think it would take a lot of capital improvement. I mean, you're going to have to make this look like, like University Drafthouse, it's crossed a lot of money.
Yeah, but, but look, but look how successful University Drafthouse is. Like that place is packed every single day, even on a weekday. So I think that would be something that, that would be an additional revenue to the golf, to the golf course and that can be a, a salary increase for Carlos.
No, 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 salary increase.
Uh-huh.
So, what do you think?
Well, if everything is, is doable, I think that it's essential to decide who we want to be and then go and be the best at it that we, that we can be. I don't think that, at least in the years that I've been here, that idea has ever been contemplated. I think that when I started here twenty-two years ago, it almost came as, as a condition of employment that I had to own or invest in the dining room myself and the golf shop. And because they were not profitable businesses at the time. And so it's never been contemplated. We wanted to be a food and beverage establishment that complemented the use of the golf course. I think this would be something separate from that, more of a, of a, of a, almost like a, like, like you said, like top golf, like a totally separate operation from the golf course, but something that can be looked at without a doubt.
I mean, if we can, if we can look at that, because if anything, we would be increasing revenue to, to the, to the golf course and we would provide more like entertainment options as well for not just the golfers, but like the family. And because honestly, if we can make this, I mean, we invested on, in Firement's, in, I'm sorry, the, that park, Firement's Park, yes, Firement's Park where University Drafthouse is and, yeah, but we're just leasing it. But here, it's, it's not just like, oh, just put all this money and you're going to have University Drafthouse there. Like here, it's not, it's a combination of that type of business being implemented here to grow the golf course and it becomes more attractive to more golfers. And if anything, you could probably even increase the fees when you have something unamended like that. Because like Firement's Park, if anything, probably people are starting to go more to that park because University Drafthouse. Actually, if you look at the elections, this past election, a lot of people went to go boat to Firement's Park, more than other areas, because they would go boat and they would go, go into the, into University Drafthouse. So, I think that is something that would be an attraction, an additional attraction to our city, if we add more of an entertainment scene here in the, in the, in the golf. So if we can explore that option, I think it would be, and, you know, and a salary increase for Carlos, I think that probably does deserve it. But I'm thinking like we, so that way we can revitalize this area. So.
Okay.
Let's look at that one.
Without a doubt, it'd be a, a different model of operation and then also it would require substantial capital investment.
Yeah, I mean, but we did it for, for a company like University Drafthouse, why can't we do it for the golfers that's owned by the city?
We'll look at it, but all of that money was private money. We didn't do any of that improvement.
Well, yeah, but that's why we would get someone like University Drafthouse to also invest money in growing that area.
Okay.
I just want to know if we can go with that two dollar increase to the green fee?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
Liz?
Airport. Is Keith here? No, he's not here yet. Go wait for Keith. Well, I don't say anything about Liz, like a superstar.
Whatever we ask for at ten percent, thank you.
He said she was a superstar. I wish you all, we said you were the superstars. Damn.
Well, he said it.
Okay, we have three major funds that we oversee. I'll start off with our operating fund, which is Fund 554.
We'll start off with the differences, if there are differences between you and the city manager.
No, we've worked really closely on
There you go. That's what we're trying to figure out. Because if, if the stuff, we know it's going to be very similar to the previous years. There's a, we know what's been going, I think it's going well now. So, if there's any differences, no differences, I think that's what we're more interested in, so we can kind of
Did we, sorry, before, did we, did you include anything like on, to improve the aesthetics of the airport?
Um, we have a healthy operating budget so that if there's any special project that would be small in nature, under fifty thousand, we could work it into that operating budget very comfortably.
Did you hear that? We got to add some color to the airport.
Yes, we are.
Make it look pretty.
So, I'll, I'll just do a really quick recap of where we've been in terms of business and then a recap of 550 and how that's reflected in the activity. We're an enterprise line, we're so dependent on the passenger utilizing our facilities. Our greatest revenue stream comes from what we call non-aeronautical revenue, the restaurant, the advertising, the newsstand, all of that revenue is extremely important. The two biggest sources of non-aeronautical revenue are rental car fees that we collect and rent that they pay, as well as parking revenue. And so, to give you a general idea, that revenue's taken the greatest hit since the pandemic. We were averaging about one point nine million in rental car revenue. And then, in addition to that, in parking revenue, it was, let's see, as I've aged, I've gotten blind, so it takes me a little bit. It was about one point four million. And that revenue, what we're estimating is that overall aeronautical revenue, or excuse me, not, non-aeronautical revenue will take about a twelve percent hit this next year or under the estimated amount and into next year as well. When we compare it to nineteen-twenty figures, it's the last highest figures that we had. In addition to that, the second area of highest revenue generation comes from our aeronautical revenue. And that is based on landed weight, the number of aircraft that come into the facility. Per passenger, we charge a certain amount of employment formula, an employment formula is used to calculate a per passenger fee. And so we're able to collect boarding bridge fees, ramp fees, based on all of that aeronautical activity. When we compare, when we're looking at this year's estimated and even into next year's estimated, we're averaging about a ten percent loss there. When this budget was prepared, it was prepared utilizing the employment data that we had from January through March and what we saw last year. Last year, we saw a fifty-three percent drop in employment. This year, we were trending at about a thirty percent drop from nineteen-twenty. So this is how we made these assumptions and these guesstimates. The good news is that after this budget was turned in from the month of April through July, we've seen tremendous growth. The July report just went out to the city manager yesterday. It's about a one hundred percent increase from last year. That's going to look great, but what's even more interesting is when we start to look at April through July, month to month, we're outperforming nineteen-twenty. And so, we, in addition to that, since this budget was turned in, we received notification that we've been awarded an additional twenty million in federal funds. And so, we've been working really closely with the city manager. We're coming back during wrap-up for a little bit more assertive of a budget in terms of capital. We're trying to figure out what the requirements are going to be for some of the funding, how we can maximize the use of that and really look at building towards that master plan that you guys approved previously and some of the key projects in there to start budget projections that we had were very low. We're seeing, the great news is that we're seeing revenue coming up, not only just like Godless said, and his, his story is very similar to mine, we're out, outpacing 1920 numbers and 18, 19 numbers. So we're happy about that. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the operating budget, which is Fund 550. At the end of the day, we end, um, when we look at the department recommendation and the city manager's recommendation, we end with about a $7 million working capital balance. So that's a healthy fund.
That doesn't include the 20 million, then?
That does not include the 20 million. Keep in mind that there are a lot of strings attached to the federal dollars. So even of the 20 million, five will be applicable to this account, to this fund, and of the five, it'll be used over a lapse of two fiscal years.
Okay.
Okay, so if there are any questions, Roy, may I continue to, the next fund? The next fund is 552. That's our PFC fund. We were also really conservative on this budget. In the past, we typically averaged between 1.2 million to 1.5 million in revenue collection. This is a passenger facility charge, it's 450 per passenger that you, in planes out of our airport. And we took that estimate down to about $900,000 a year, but we have a pretty healthy fund balance there. So going into the new year, we're at about a $7.8 million fund balance. This money is utilized for specific, um, projects that are allowed by FAA. Essentially, they become local match for projects that are federally funded through FAA AIP grant programs. And so we've got most of this funding tied to those capital projects that you'll see in 554. We also think that our numbers were extremely conservative. Again, we were estimating a 30% drop in traffic from 1920. That's definitely not gonna be the case. At the end of the day, uh, our estimates for this year are that we'll end the calendar year, let's see, at about a one, a 1.5% difference from the 1920, uh, year, from the 2020 calendar year. So we're in good shape. We also think that this revenues, uh, is gonna increase. And then the projects that we've tied for next year into this fund are simple, it's an ARF unit, it's a replacement of that union, unit. Um, that unit has a value of about a million dollars. And in addition to that, 1.2 million has been slated out of this fund to cover, uh, terminal restroom renovations inside of our facility. These projects are 100% matched out of this fund, so we're happy about that. Any questions on 552?
The matching comes from the 20 million or what is the matching factor?
Um, they're at 100% funded by PFC. So we use this revenue stream at 100% for those two projects.
Not touching the 20 million.
Not touching the 20.
So the beginning, the beginning balance, fund balance is a 5.8, but it ends up at 2.6.
It ends, it's, um, ends up at 2.5 and that's because we've applied towards this, the 2.2 in new projects, the 2.2 million in new projects. In addition to that, the terminal construction has a debt service attached to it that we're still paying off on it. That's about 644,000 a year that we pay. And in addition to that, we've transferred out of this fund about 3.2 million that goes to cover the local match on the capital improvement project fund. So that's why you see that, um, that fund balance at 2.7.
Do you see it going lower in the future?
Well, we have to utilize all of these funds. We can't be carrying these over. FAA audits us annually. We work very closely with SECIO, um, through the external auditor process. And we're not allowed to use this kind of like as a, as a slush fund or anything like that. It's connected to those approved projects. So we've got a, a show, a good, good effort in expending those dollars. Once we've had, we've realized such a huge fund balance, if we're not expending it, then FAA prohibits us from continuing to collect. And then, um, if I may, I'll go now to Fund 554. This is our capital improvement project fund.
Of course, CIP.
This one is gonna be the one where you're gonna see a lot of changes, because this is where we can apply the bulk of that money that we got. So of the 20 million that they just gave us, we're banking on getting another 15 million. Most of that money is going, or not all of it, is going towards that runway safety improvement project. Um, so you all remember that we've done phase one and two, we've completed, we're funded through those phases, we just got that money to fund phase three and four, and so we'll be completing that. Our goal is to have that completed this year. Um, for us, it's a, it's been our biggest priority project. If you all recall, it was a safety issue. We wanna make certain that we don't have waterways that are exposed that would be wildlife attractives. So when we look at this overall fund, um, you'll see a negative fund balance on the department request. That's simply because we, we had an oversight where we're not carrying over the retainage reimbursements. The city manager corrected that and in his recommendation, you see a zero fund balance. This fund is an important fund for us, but you'll, you know, we typically don't carry a balance, because this is where we really work on all our capital projects. Um, of the projects that we show, we put together placeholders for everything that we have as part of our five-year FAA capital improvement program. That doesn't mean that all the federal dollars come in. And so you'll notice that it seems to be like such a robust ask, right? It's 46 million total, I'm sorry, um, it's a total appropriate, yeah, 46 million total appropriations. That's all gonna be dependent on federal funding. But it's important for us to already have those itemized projects detailed, so that as funding becomes available, we have your approval and we can continue through the budget process to move on those projects. It almost feels like we're always up against that race, you know, what is the legislature gonna do? When are we gonna get funding? There's, all of a sudden, there's discretionary funds. If we're able to move with having plans in place, having projects budgeted, it's just a lot easier for us to be able to capitalize on those opportunities, like was the case with the Slums Office of Work.
And you have enough projects that are already designed, ready to go with, with the long-term funding?
We sat with Roy and we have like another 10 projects to add to this list.
Oh, okay.
So we do, we are ready. We're really proud of the work that we've done, very proud of the work that Jeremy's done. Um, we have, through that master plan process, you guys have given us all the tools that we need as a staff to identify to FAA what is of most importance to us. And once those, um, that long-term plan is put into what we call an airport layout plan and FAA seals and approves it, that means that everything on that plan has been blessed by them and is eligible for funding pending availability. And we've done that. In that plan, in that layout plan, we have a parallel runway, the extended runway, we have the terminal expansion, we have a new ARF station, I mean, we put it all in there. So we're very proud of that, because it's a, it's an arduous process, but it took, it did take us like two years to get that done. We had a lot of input from the community, from the commission, from our different board members, and we're really proud of the work, we're ready to work. And so we've got a real nice plan to put into action, these 15 million that we have slated for projects. So you'll see that in the wrap-up.
On the passenger boarding bridge improvements, is that the replacement?
Yes. So just so that you know, all, it looks really nice, but the terminal part of the challenges that we have is that it is an older building. Those bridges are 20 years old and so a lot of the parts are no longer being produced and it, it's difficult to maintain. So we wanna completely replace all four.
Four or six?
Four. Four of the six.
Of course.
Two are new, they were purchased with the terminal expansion project. Our goal really for this next year is to negotiate with airlines, uh, a new contract. And so part of our goal also was to show a pretty ambitious plan, so that they see how our local dollars are committed. This is the first time that we're going to attempt to negotiate, uh, what we call a hybrid lease model. The hybrid lease model is based on a compensatory model and a residual model, in which we both assume some risk. And so we wanna make sure that the airlines are paying their fair share of what it costs to operate at our airport. And so that's why for us, it's real important to have all these numbers tied properly, to make sure that they know not just what we're doing this year, but kind of what we look like for the next five years.
And Liz, for the airport, like for, to add additional airlines, kinda like, cause I know like V-By-Rose open in Harlingen?
Yes.
Is there any, anything like in the contract that we have with Alomar where, would prevent us from also seeking out for, for V-By-Rose?
No, and we can work through the city manager's office to give you all more detailed update of what our air service plans are. We don't typically speak to those matters publicly.
Okay.
Um, we go through an executive session process.
Okay.
Um, but we did have conversations with a lot of airlines and we do always. And so we're happy to report to you, um, why we didn't land some deals, why we did others and where we stand. Um, we're really proud of Alomar, they're kind of like the little train that sometimes we thought couldn't, but they could. Um, just to give you a general idea, we're capturing the majority of market share to Monterrey and the valley. This is through June. We're outperforming our competitor by about 5% of total passengers. That's unheard of for a small regional company to be outperforming a low-cost carrier. Um, it's really unheard of, so we're really proud of that. And just to give you a general idea, in the monthly report that we prepare for the city manager, we outline how each of the routes are faring in the whole valley. So MFBAA versus American Airlines in Harlingen versus Brownsville. And when we itemize all the numbers for every single airline and route by airline out of each airport, McAllen has the two highest performing routes in the valley. And so it's interesting, actually, the, the top three, it's first, it's Amer, it's American Airlines out of McAllen. They're averaging about 170,000 passengers, uh, from January through July. Southwest out of Harlingen is averaging about 115,000. So it's a good 40-some thousand difference in passengers. So that just, sometimes in the market, there's, um, a misconception, right, that we're perhaps not as competitive, but the numbers indicate otherwise. Overall, we're capturing about 49% of market share in the valley. That's followed by Harlingen at 37% and that's followed by Brownsville at 14%. That's from January through June.
When Harlingen says they're the biggest, uh, does that mean in square footage or what are they trying to say?
I mean, I don't know. Um, we have the most passengers, we have the most passengers.
We have the most passengers.
False advertising.
They might have the most square footage, but.
It's a really competitive market. They've done really well for themselves. You know, we don't dictate what the market does. We try to understand where there's gaps and opportunities and we really try to do the best with promoting what we offer.
What do you think, Liz, that is gonna happen with the, with the borders open? Do you see any probably a decrease in the Monterrey route, but maybe an increase in the other ones?
Yes, um, actually, I think that what we'll, we'll see the biggest impact will be on Monterrey, because right now they're running between one of the four dailies, depending on demand. And so that definitely is not long-lasting. The good thing is that they're regional jets and so they're smaller. And so you're talking about a 72% impact versus one flight, you know? The low-cost carrier, if they are not, um, at at least an 80% load fracture, they don't necessarily survive.
Actually, I think we just gotta be a little careful, but I think we're totally outside of the budget, they're discussing issues that I think, I don't know whether Alomar would want us to be discussing right here.
Yes, ma'am.
At least that's what I think.
Just, just to check that probably the, maybe the revenues that we might or might not have as soon as the bridges open or not.
We did take that into account.
So if it does affect this.
We did take that into account. Uh, Mayor, the, what we projected would happen next year as well, if there's any changes, we projected that. And so that is taken into account and wrap-up, we'll present those numbers.
Mayor, I have a question for you. So we've got two more departments, we can either finish those two and then go executive or go executive, because we had said.
Where do we start?
I'm okay with that.
Or, we can finish that way people.
Well, can we bring that, that information back for an executive session and that way we can get an update and everything, cause it's super interesting and that's, that's the one thing that I think we should all kinda keep, keep track of it.
Yes.
Thank you, Liz.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we got McAllen Metro, Transit. Another COVID moneymaker.
I'll be presenting on, uh, the Transit Downtown Services Department. We have, uh, a total of three funds, uh, the McA, Metro McAllen Fund, the Bus Terminal Fund and Downtown Services Fund. Uh, in that order, uh, Metro McAllen Fund accounts for all the operating expenditures for both the Metro and the Bus Terminals. The Bus Terminal Account, uh, Bus Terminal Fund accounts for, um, all preventative maintenance and, uh, and capital expenditures. And Downtown Services, we manage the parking garage and all parking enforcement downtown.
Guys, I think we have to.
Do we execute it?
He says it, Joe, thank you. I apologize, I think the executive is leaving.
We all need everybody.
The record should reflect that Commissioner Haddad, um, filled out an affidavit with respect to his conflict, didn't participate in the executive session and has abstained from any conversation and is going to recuse himself from the vote. Mayor, I recommend the commission entertain a motion to authorize city manager and city attorney to negotiate incentives described in executive session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? All against? Motion passed.
The mayor in his notes.
Law school, that's all I did. That was, that was us after we, we talked.
You know these PIs are public, right? You know these knees are like open to the public.
They can't see that.
Okay, onward.
Metro McAllen.
Stay to the budget.
We have a, a healthy, healthy budget, healthy fund balance in, in this fund. Minor, minor changes that we made this year and all were, were approved by the city manager, so really nothing else to discuss, other than we will likely, we're using a lot of CARES Act funds, last year and this year, next year, we'll probably have a bigger request. But other than that, this year, everything we asked for was approved.
A lot of gas to do, of course, because of all the stuff that's going on. Commissioners, any questions?
All, yeah, all CARES funds, so we're in great shape.
As long as we try to get as much usage as possible, you know, how we can, how we can, it could be used, whatever we should be doing.
Mayor is very creative, obviously, yeah. Very creative.
Thanks, Mayor.
Bus Terminal Fund, everything good? The only thing, um, the Bus Terminal, everything good, that's our capital account, we have a lot of projects, but everything good.
The one that came, uh, four million over budget?
We were able to get all that money and then some, so. But the only, the only fund that, that is Downtown Services, we, we got hit pretty bad because of COVID. We estimate that between last year and then this year, we probably lost about a million dollars in revenue. And so we, one of the things that we'd like to see, I know that CARES Act does provide, you know, uh, funding to make up for revenue losses, so that's something that we might wanna consider.
Mayor, are we looking at any time like extending the route, like adding more routes to our map?
That's why next year, you'll, you'll have a big request.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, the project will be, uh, in conjunction with the launching of our new, our new Transit Station and, and making a shop. So that, that'll be a new launching point and we'll redesign routes, but it'll be more expensive, better service, but more cost.
Thank you. Anything else, guys?
Are the sidewalks coming along?
We're, I think, almost ready to put, to put out a bid, if we haven't already, for, for sidewalks. We're, I think, almost ready to put out a bid if we haven't already for, for sidewalks. And then so we've, we've got $2 million and those will be expended between this year and next year. And then about 20 shelters a year on top of the 28 that we've ever given.
When's kind of like the, the starting, when are you guys going to start like building?
The sidewalks?
And the shelters?
The shelters, we're just waiting, pending delivery. So, you know, we need to start putting those up as soon as they get here, probably within, within fiscal year, we'll start, we'll start that. We won't complete it until next year, but we'll at least get started.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Had to ask about the sidewalk, sorry.
In district, there is.
All right, sir.
The best for the last.
The best for the last.
You've made us a lot of money this year.
Yeah, we have and we will. No, um, our mayor, City Commissioners, good afternoon. Uh, like to start by saying that there are no differences between the city manager's recommendation and the Bridge Department's request. We, on both bridges, uh, operation expenses and administration expenses will be coming in below budget. And, uh, like to talk to you about revenues for, if you want to turn to fund balance summary for McAllen Valvo International Bridge, or it's the 560 Fund, will be coming, we're estimating to end the fiscal year at 7,617,135, which is a bit low from the budget amount of 11,012,945. Uh, the decrease is due in large part just because of the travel restrictions that still exist. The, uh, budget fiscal year 2022, we are forecasting that the total revenues be at And the forecast assumes that the travel restrictions will be lifted hopefully this month. But we're forecasting that they will be lifted by October.
But yeah, for sure, for sure?
No, 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 it's a, it's a forecast.
Oh.
It's a forecast.
But there's no indication, right?
There's no indication right now. Right. The only thing that we have right now is, is the, that Canada and the US border, the travel restrictions were lifted.
But that's the restrictions.
So that could reflect a little bit on our board too.
But the Canada-US border doesn't have the US.
Exactly.
You got to be vaccinated, you have to have a negative test and.
Exactly. So we're waiting for a plan.
And it was approved by the Bridge Board.
And it was.
Anything else, guys?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we have today, sir.
That's it? You're doing more for the President than you need to do.
Great, thank you, Mayor.